Okay, well hey, it's a pleasure to be here with all my colleagues tonight and those of you who are here in the chambers to talk about important items. So our first order business is just calling this meeting to order. So I'm officially calling the committee of the whole meeting to order for the Kalamazoo City Commission for Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Decker.
Present.
Commissioner Hess.
Present.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Juarez. Commissioner Pradel.
Present.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Commissioners, can I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Juarez?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Pradel, supported by Commissioner Hoffman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Hundred percent on that. Next is Communications Manager Ritzma.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Well, I know that Deputy City Manager Chamberlain is out of the office for a bit here, taking a much-needed break, and we've got Andy in for IT Department handling the calls to the outside. So just want to let people know that next is the opportunity to make a public comment for this meeting, the committee of the whole meeting. You will have two minutes. Please state your name and where you live in the city, and I'm going to give the number if you intend to call in. It is 888-382-9556. And we will start with anyone who's in the chambers who wants to take advantage of the public comment period for the committee of the whole meeting.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Dana Wagner. I'm the Director of Marketing and Communications for Discover Kalamazoo. And just wanted to make a comment about the National Street Rod Association coming to Kalamazoo this weekend for their Nationals North event that'll be taking place at the Kalamazoo County Expo Center, September 8th through 10th. Brings about 5,000 visitors here to our community. So it's a big, important event here and new this year. There will be a street rod car parade this Friday at noon. The cars are going to be taking off from the Expo Center and will travel downtown with a segment down the Kalamazoo Mall. So we are encouraging all of our businesses and residents to be out there on the mall and cheer on those street rods. And I know that Mayor David Anderson will be the grand marshal for the parade. And we also wanted to extend the invitation, if there were any city council members who wanted to be in a street rod in that parade. There are opportunities. You can come to the Expo Center on Friday between 11:00 a.m. to 11:30 to get into one of those street rods and cheer everyone on in the parade. I do have a few flyers with maps as well for that parade, if any was interested. Should I? Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Yes, and this will be actually my first time being in a street rod, actually. And anyone else is welcome to attend. Yes. Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? Welcome.
Hi, my name is Tom Howes. I'm from Kalamazoo. A few months ago, I came and attended a meeting and GPI, Graphics Packaging Pollution, was a little bit more in the news then. It still is for a lot of people living around that area in downtown. But I figured I'd comment again, especially Cooney, Dr., or, sorry, Vice Mayor Cooney said that until this is resolved, he'd like to see this issue in every agenda for every committee meeting, which I remember at the time thinking, that's great news. Let's do that, but I don't see it on the agenda tonight. So I'm hoping that the city reconsiders putting that back in the agenda. I didn't know where this issue stood, so I did a little bit of research. I found an article from June 27th online on Channel 3, watched their report, which wasn't very good. They went and did an interview with the plant manager who said, I quote, the reporter says, "Well, those numbers are impressive, so are these. All zeros on the day that we were there, real-time hydrogen sulfide emissions map as well, and well below the state's acceptable threshold, 1.4 parts per billion." So I Googled that same day, that appears to be on the map, and I'm seeing 26.9. At about the same time that the reporter, I've got a screenshot from that interview here, and it seems to be about the same time that they were being interviewed. Regardless, June 27th, we've got 20.5. August 24th, 30.1. These levels are still extremely high. They should still be a priority of the City Commission and be on future agendas. If anybody wants these materials or wants to talk afterwards, I'm happy to share. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the chambers that wants to speak for the committee of the whole meeting? See, no one, has anybody called in with comments for this meeting?
Oh, let me check, Mayor. There appears to be no comments at this time.
Thank you for taking care of that, I appreciate that. Manager Ritzma, we're down to the topic of our agenda for the committee of the whole meeting today.
Yeah, I would like our Community Planning Economic Development Director, Antonio Mitchell, come forward, and he's going to update us on the cannabis program. Antonio?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, City Attorney, and Commissioners for having me again tonight. We're coming full circle from pretty much a couple of months ago, two or three months ago. We came, gave a PowerPoint presentation, and we said we'll be putting together RFP. Be ready to get that out, and before we send it out officially, we'll bring it back to the commission and see if you had any questions and answer questions and talk about it a little bit more on what the scope of work that we're trying to accomplish. Share that with the commission this past weekend. I'll point out the scope of work of items that, quote-unquote, we're looking to address with this social equity cannabis chamber that we're trying to create. And hopefully be able to answer some of your questions and do some clarification if necessary. I do have staff support. Mr. Paul Thorne Ringer is here, otherwise PJ is here to assist me if something I cannot answer, hopefully he can answer. All right? So, like I said, in front of you on page two, scope of work, there's 12 different items that we want the cannabis new chamber to focus on. One component, and I'll go through them just with just naming the titles so we can dig into them a little bit deeper if you have additional questions, is, of course, first and foremost is community outreach on education, health, and safety with cannabis, education on that. Cannabis state law and federal concerns and laws that the community needs to be aware of, and also working with the cannabis industry in those areas. Local, regional workforce education and cannabis concerns for employment. One thing we want to really focus on in this area is that we want to make sure that city residents, in particular in our SBK neighborhoods, have an opportunity to work for these companies, organizations, definitely in the city, but hopefully even beyond the city if necessary. There's also some youth workforce development and education and training that we want to incorporate in this process as well, so that individuals understand what the industry is, what other opportunities there is in the industry beyond just the cannabis, quote-unquote, stores. There's more opportunities than just that in this industry, so we want to educate young people on that if they're interested. Like we said, focused on SBK neighborhoods and micro home business development is our focus going forward, and economic development is to create more opportunities for home-based development. We've talked about daycare and things like that. There's other opportunities for small micro businesses to work with this industry, and we want to make sure we're educating the community on those opportunities and how to get them positioned to, as I say, market themselves in their, hopefully, small business to assist in their growth and development. We're also, as we talked about before, cannabis business ownership, development workshops. We want to really work with individuals that may be interested in this industry, be owners, to understand what that process is, beyond just the money. What, you know, what they need to do to put together a business plan, what's the financial structures of these type of businesses, and that whole educational process of what it really means legally to be in this industry. So there's no workshops, definitely being provided locally to assist individuals to do that. So we want to work with the industry and the community to be educated on what that not only really means, but what the, quote-unquote, steps you would have to take to be there as a future entrepreneur, owner of a cannabis businesses here, not only in the city of Kalamazoo, but just say in Michigan in general. Also working with the cannabis chamber with some organization membership development to create their own funding source. We, as a city, are pretty much creating the seed opportunity for this social equity cannabis chamber to grow, but we don't want, of course, to be funding it forever. So we want to make sure they're positioning themselves to be self-sustaining sooner than later, as they say. This is a three-year commitment to grow and develop, but we want them to make sure they're taking the steps to stabilize themselves in the future, and we want to assist them in that process. So that's part of this process as well. And then cannabis business retention services. Right now, one thing that is not happening with this industry is attention to details to assist them to be not just productive, but also great social businesses in the community. That they have not only a presence that is a benefit for their product and who they're selling to, but they're a great business partner here in the city. And so we want to assist them to not only understand what that means, but also what's expected of them beyond, quote-unquote, the city. We want a chamber to really help them shine as a cannabis business citizen in the city of Kalamazoo, so that they are looked upon as an asset and not just a company that's here to, you know, make money. Which companies are here to make money, but we want them to go beyond that if we can assist them to do that. So that's part of this process. And then real important to us in this, which, to be honest with you, this is my main focus of this, because we focus on economic development, community development, is the college tuition reimbursement. Otherwise, assisting individuals that want to get in this business to get the certifications that they need. And what we're trying to do here is really focus on, right now, KVCC, Kalamazoo Valley Community College, for anyone that doesn't know that, has some certification programming to assist individuals to get certifications to work for this industry and work in this industry. So what we want to do is provide what we call tuition reimbursement. Pretty much anyone in the city that pretty much goes to the class, gets a job, is there for 90 days, get through their probationary period, as they say, and is real, they can get pretty much, in the city, 50% reimbursement for their tuition costs. Now, if you're in the SBK neighborhood, though, Edison, North Side, East Side, you could get 100% reimbursement. And so we want to incentivize, of course, as many individuals to want to strive in this area to get the right education, the right certifications, and we would like to reward them for taking advantage of that opportunity by assisting them to be successful as much as possible with this type of initiative. Now, the other side is the on-the-job training reimbursement, which we would work with, hopefully, the company to have incentive to hire from our SBK neighborhoods and assist them with, as they say, an incentive of on-the-job training process, which is, if a person works there for 90 days, what we did in Michigan Works, when I worked for Michigan Works, for working with individuals that were displaced workers, is if you hire someone that's been displaced and they're eligible, and after 90 days, you apply for the program before they get past their 90 days, we can reimburse you up to 50% of their pay with a cap for that 90 days of that on-the-job training. So we want to create not only incentive for individuals that want to, quote-unquote, work for this industry, but we want to create incentive for the industry to really pursue our inner-city SBK residents to work for their companies. And so that's assistance. Part of this as well is establishing a relationship with the businesses to assist with creating, hopefully, a job page with the cannabis social equity chamber, because right now, the industry cannot work with Michigan Works or other, might say, government components to assist them to market and share their information on one location, on all the job opportunities. So hopefully, with this effort, we'll be able to create a job informational page for businesses, of course, locally in the city, but hopefully, the chamber will reach out beyond the city and get those businesses to participate as well, to post their jobs and connections to their webpage for individuals that would like to work for their company. So that's a mission as well. And then to ensure that the program is working with, not only hiring, local communication on an ongoing basis. We, as a city, only have so much capacity in our division to, as I say, work with businesses in general, but because of the equity initiative by this commission, we want to make sure we're structuring, hopefully, an outside entity that's going to assist more and beyond the services that we provide with retention, and really focus on this industry being successful at working with the community. And that's the overview of pretty much the steps that we're trying to take with this RFP to hopefully bring in the right organization to assist and accomplish this scope of work. I will take questions.
Thank you very much, Director Mitchell. I appreciate you being here and providing us with this, I suppose, still somewhat draft form, but a pretty close RFP document.
It is pretty much 98%.
That's what it looks like, yes. Are there questions for Director Mitchell on this, from commission? Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director, for you and your team putting this together. I didn't have, you answered most of the questions that I had written down. I did have a question on, in the scope of the work for 3.4. That's our youth workforce development training in the SBK neighborhoods. Will this chamber be thinking about the age limits and what, I guess, I don't know what kind of training or what kind of youth are we looking, 14, 16 on? I mean, when you say youth, I guess my question would be, you know, what kind of areas do you think that they would be able to be trained in this not being of legal age?
Yeah, probably focus on the legal age, over 18. But one thing that other businesses do is they have internships and other programmings to assist young adults to get into that industry. Sorry to say, don't see that happening in this industry yet, so we want to take that first step. If we have young people that want to get into this industry, it'd be probably best if you do an internship or, you know, some type of apprenticeship with the program to understand, you know, what are the opportunities and what are your expectations of the opportunity? Is it realistic? So if we can get the industry and the local cannabis chamber to work with the industry, to open up those opportunities for young people to see what's possible, they may say yes, they may say no. But I think it's best to provide similar opportunities that we provide in other industries with this type of educational opportunity.
Okay, thank you. I was just, when I hear youth, I think, you know, sometimes I think my babies, you know? I'm like, what are you talking?
No, Lisa.
Okay, so, and then also for the 3.7, it talks about the membership and the membership funding development. Now, that, those funds will come from the tax revenue that you guys are now getting from the state, is that correct?
That is correct. What we're looking for is this social equity cannabis chamber to try to match our dollars, to put together a process that, our dollars are not forever. It's those three years, it could, you know, be extended by this commission for another three years, another year, another two years. But we want that industry to stabilize its own self. We're working with the cannabis business community and the community in general to show its value, so that is more self-sustaining beyond our city dollars, and which will position, hopefully, us to redirect our dollars in the future to something else, dealing with this industry on the equity side.
Thank you. You're, I wasn't quick enough. I was trying to see exactly how much, I know we got in that paperwork before, what is in the fund right now.
We're looking at, well, I don't know the fund total, but with this funding opportunities, a minimum of 200,000, we're looking for this per year, for the three years.
Okay, so 200,000, that would come from the excess, from the tax?
Yeah, from equity tax, yes, correct. A minimum, a minimum of that.
A minimum of that. And you talk about it being self-sustaining, which I think is great. You always want an organization to be self-sustaining. What would that, do you have any idea of what that funding fee would be for the membership? Are we still working that out?
No.
Okay.
Well, we haven't, as I say, we want to have that discussion with, we have ideas, but we can't dictate to a organization, you know, how they should do what they do. We can just make suggestions and hopefully assist them in understanding, that's our expectation, is that you're not expecting to be funded by the city forever. There is a deadline, it could be three years, it could be six, it could be nine, but you, as an organization, from the beginning, need to be positioning yourself to be, if you want to sustain yourself, position yourself to be self-sustaining and not rely on city equity dollars.
Okay, thank you. And I think, I think the only other, I think this looks great. I kind of, you know, read through this, and the only thought that I could think of is when we come, when our cannabis organizations come to us at the meetings, we usually ask them, you know, within their questions, what type of, what do they give back to the community? I think that that would be an awesome thing to put when we ask for our proposal requirements. What are they doing for the community? I mean, other than that, I think it looks great. That would just be...
Yeah, that's, that's one of the community engagement components, because you're 100% correct, is that, right now, as you know, when cannabis businesses come and they give a presentation, each one of them are doing something different. So one thing we want to do with this social equity cannabis chamber is set a platform of expectations and outline of how they can engage with the community. There are nonprofits that would participate, but they don't have, quote-unquote, as businesses, time to go out and knock on doors. Hopefully, this social equity chamber will be able to knock on doors and see who wants to participate and be able to put together a list to share with the industry, and also assist with them putting together really a community engagement plan. Right now, their engagement plan is more for the state, not for us. We would like to put something together that's for the city of Kalamazoo, but also make sure they have access to the organizations that we say they should, quote-unquote, be putting money into, that they really have access to those organizations. But sorry to say, they, they're running the business, this is not part of their platform in most of the cases, so they're not out knocking on doors. They're just, you know, getting lucky that someone said, "Yeah, I'll take money from you." We want to be more precise with their plan and more precise with who they're engaging and why.
Okay.
Commissioner Huff, yes, thank you, Commissioner Decker. Commissioner Hoffman?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Mitchell, thank you for this. My question is, have you had an opportunity to kind of gauge or have conversations to see how this could be supported by the business owners right now?
Yeah, we've had some conversation, and the conversations really leaned on, like, a membership type of initiative, like they would be with any other chamber, which we say that's a good idea, especially since the business industry is more understanding of that structure. Now, will that happen? That will be up to the chamber, if they say, "Yeah, we want to go that route," that would be one of our suggestions, to have more participation and communication if you have membership and membership fees. So there's, as they say, some skin in the game of the communication. But they may have a different creative idea. That would be pretty much our main component of working with those licenses that we have right now.
Was there any other feedback that you all received in reference to some of the businesses being open to committing?
Yeah, we had some feedback, they are, would be interested in that. We've only talked to a handful, especially our big ones, because they like the ideal of a central location, organization that's working with them to be not only more socially connected to the community, but that's also working on their behalf to communicate beyond them to the community on the new laws, the, what's facts, what's rumors, and also, more importantly, the job opportunities. There's a lot of different job opportunities that people are missing out on, that we want to make sure we educate the community, and they think that's very important, because their approach is advertising, website, things like that, but they don't have someone really getting into the community to really share the opportunity and what that opportunity really means.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. Commissioner Pradel?
Thank you, Director Mitchell, for being here. Just, I wanted to share a couple thoughts, but a few questions as well. I noticed on here, you mentioned as well that it's a three-year period contract, which I think is really smart. I think that continuity is going to be important. I wonder if you foresee any once-a-year check-ins, though, especially in this first three years, just to make absolutely sure, because as great as it is to make sure there's that continuity and that organization or entity can depend on that support, it's also risky, right? It's, so I guess it's high risk, high reward for that strategy, but how do you foresee that going?
Yeah, so you hit on it, Commissioner Pradel, is that we're going to be working with them on a monthly basis, being the chamber. Pretty much our relationship with the cannabis business industry is pretty much government relationship, you know? Are you in compliance with, you know, the laws of the state and the laws of local community? But it's not an advocate. And so one thing we want to do is be able to work with the industry to advocate for this industry here, but more importantly, pull together data that we can share with pretty much this commission and the community on not only what they're doing business-wise in the community, which is great, but more what they're also doing echo, echo-bee wise in the community. Because, of course, that's not talked about, you know? It's talked about the traffic and that our, quote-unquote, fund keeps going up, which, of course, means they're selling more. Well, how... Well, how is that money coming back? You know, what are they doing to reinvest from those dollars? We want to be able to share those stories and that data and that information with the community. And, and more importantly, beyond that, also, hopefully, the, the employment opportunity in quote-unquote jobs that they're creating that are, our residents are taking advantage of. That's really important to me, is that this industry is really assisting individuals that want to work for this industry to work and be successful in those industries.
Should be kind of like a annual report card, if you will, of how they're living up to those. Commissioner Decker, I tend, you were talking a little bit about, and asked questions about that youth workforce development. I almost wonder if it would be better use of term to say young adult? When I read that as a youth, I think to myself, I mean, even Bell's Brewery, like, Bell's Brewery won't even sponsor an event if it's a college or school age event. And, you know, that's not to say I think there's any judgments or whatever about it, but, you know, you don't see a lot of like, you know, middle or high school, you know, brewery prep or, you know, Michigan Lotto, you know, kind of opportunities either. And, and I just, I think it should be relative to like legal age, you know? But, but I, but I, what I do wonder, and I, I wonder if you give some thought to this as well, if there would be opportunities where instead of it being like, hey, let's prepare you at age 14 for a career in cannabis, if it was like, hey, age 14-year-old, let's get you passionate, interested in entrepreneurship? Because then, when it gets to legal age or even beforehand, maybe you are getting into business, or you could be, you know, get to a place where you decide you want to go into the cannabis industry. And I wonder if there's maybe a place for them to still be inserted in that, that sphere, especially in our SPK neighborhoods, to support like youth entrepreneurship work, but just in the, the general sense, you know?
Yeah, hopefully, excuse me, hopefully, you're 100% correct. If we can engage this industry with a plan and get community feedback on some of the things that you just mentioned, hopefully we can get the industry to go beyond, as they say, I don't want to name any organizations, other than clothes and food, just put it that way, and invest in youth development type of initiatives. Now, the, the key is, because of the stigma with this industry, is that we have to build, we as the, as they say, the chamber and the city, have to build up a relationship with the nonprofit community to be more acceptable towards this type of future funding opportunity. And, like you said, be able to direct those dollars into programming that's beyond the cannabis industry. So that is something that we have definitely talked about internally. There's opportunity with some of the things that we're doing in CPED with our entrepreneurship development, that we will love for them to assist with funding those opportunities. And youth entrepreneurship is one of those entities as well.
That'd be cool. One of the, the item 3.5, it talks about micro-home-based business entrepreneurship development, but it specifically says, support the growth of home-based cannabis-related, so cannabis-related businesses in the SPK neighborhoods. I wonder, so specifically, that's saying like you are creating a business that is somehow involved in cannabis?
Yeah, so, yeah, so on that, not like a shop, right? But one thing we need to ma- make clear is, the cannabis business is just like any other business. So it has certain products and services and contracted services it needs to run its business that it does not do internally. And so you could have, I want to say yourself, me, that I have a specific type of business, just say a print company, but I have a, a print company that all I do is design, I do no printing, but I do design for shirts and merch and things like that. Well, I could get a contract with, sorry, Mayor, with the Mayor's cannabis business to provide direct contracted services to the Mayor for that type of business component. Now, that's a home-based business, I'm at home, working in my office, I'm just doing design, but I have a contract with the Mayor's company to do his design merch in his business for the local company. Hopefully it goes beyond that, but now I have a contract, a home-based business that quote-unquote connects directly to that industry. There, there's, there's other opportunities other than the sale of marijuana that we want to make sure that, this is one example that someone could do, working with that business. But because there's only discussion of smoking marijuana and edibles and things like that, people don't see beyond all the other things that's required to run a regular business is also required at this. And they usually contract a lot of those services out. I may have a cleaning service, right? Well, they need to keep their space clean as well, why can't I have a contract directly? It's a home-based business, to clean their offices on a regular basis.
So it would be, it would be for people, it could be beyond just selling like the edibles or, because that's what I was, I was hoping, because I was thinking to myself the same deal, is like if it was a consultant, if it was a, a somebody who has a, a business that cleans businesses, or if it's somebody that has a marketing business, or those sort of things. So it could be any of those things potentially.
It could be any of those things, and we wanted to make sure it's clear that, that there's no misunderstanding that we're trying to get businesses to work directly with the cannabis industry. So, if you're, if you want to do it, or if you're shy not to do it, then you, you probably shouldn't be engaged in this conversation, because we also want to be, be able to share that information with this forum that we have this many new businesses in SPK neighborhoods that are working directly with this many quote-unquote cannabis businesses. Just like the workforce development component, this industry is not out knocking on doors trying to get folks that look like me, the opportunity to quote-unquote promote my business to them. So we want to make sure this chamber can do that for them, that they can be an advocate to the businesses, like, hey, we got these businesses, you need this service, you need to look at when you're bidding this out at these companies here for that opportunity.
That's great, yeah, thank you. You may have already done this, but I just wonder if there'd be an opportunity to connect with Commissioner Juarez, I know this is particularly a real passion issue for him, and he's not here tonight, so I know he would have some questions and some, some thoughts. And then, the other thing I was just curious as well is like how, in the, in the RFP, how do you avoid like some gross like conflict of interest, I guess? It doesn't necessarily have to be necessarily that there's something nefarious going on, but just as, how do you avoid a situation where, you know, somebody who's co-owner in one of the major establishments here that's in the cannabis industry decides, hey, I'm going to go out and bid for this RFP? And are there any safeguards in place to prevent? I was just reading a news article about, somewhere up north, about there's this town where there's this big legal issue going on about their, city council basically being too many conflicts with the cannabis industry and who was selected and whatnot, and I just tried to think about how to avoid something similar potentially happening if, if people felt like there was favoritism, or...
Yeah, the favoritism, I can't answer that, that, but I can answer to what you said, the conflict of interest. So we do have a conflict of interest component in our process with the city, to really state what that is, so that pretty much us as staff are reviewing that we understand what the conflict is, which then we talk to the attorney's office to clarify, okay, should this company or this individual be a part of this process? And they give us the, though they shouldn't, or yes, they should. Sometimes it gets a little, like I said, murky, and like I said, that's where our attorney's office will hopefully assist us with saying, no, don't do that, this is the reason why, and we've been pretty consistent, and when they say, don't do that, we don't do that.
Right. I was just thinking about like where, how far is, too far? So like say if, you know, one of the cannabis locations is like, hey, we've got 10,000 extra square foot, you know, come on in cannabis chamber, you can stay with us, is that, you know, too far? If there's a, a co-ownership relationship between the entity that'll manage this, this chamber and one of, one of the companies here locally, or somebody who's looking to come here, or, you know, those sort of things, I, just how we could be thoughtful about that to avoid any potential conflicts? Just, just a thought to, to think about, anyways, that's my head.
So one key factor, like you said, with the, the conflict, is to, to make clear this, this social equity cannabis chamber won't have any say on our city process of approving, you know, you know, clarifying licenses and things like that. So they won't have any influence there, their, their focus is only social equity component to expand that platform with the business. So your example definitely could be possible, in the sense that if I'm brand-new, I get, you know, the contract, like you said, I'm there in whatever space I am for a year, my lease comes up, and, sorry, Mayor, Mayor comes and says, hey, I got space, you know?
We're talking about conflict of interest, and I...
I, I got space, come, you know, lease for me for a dollar, or whatever. Hopefully we can contest that a little bit of, you know, that's great, you know, sorry, Mayor. Mayor wants to lease you space for a dollar, but they need to, they and them need to understand that will have no influence on our government process for their approval or non-approval, and also what dollars they can access and not access. So we would work with our attorney's office to make that clear with that communication if there is a situation like that. Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Sorry, Mayor.
Apology accepted. Commissioner Hess?
Oh, gosh. Thank you for this presentation, Antonio. Is anyone else in Michigan doing such a thing? And have you, have you talked to anybody else that's doing such a thing for education?
No, we're really in the pack on a lot of stuff. This is another one. Everyone's watching, so if you think no one's watching Kalamazoo, they are, to see what, not only what we're doing, how we're doing it, and if it's going to be effective. The whole idea of the pilot is to, to go through, as they say, the thorns and remove them, to make adjustments, and to also, as we talked about, get the data and information to share, to see, is this being effective? If it's not being effective, then it, it will end. It will, it will end, and then we'll approach it a different way. We think it can be effective, but we know we need someone beyond us as the city, hopefully, to lead it on a daily basis. We touch on it as needed on a weekly, monthly basis. But it's not something that we wake up thinking about, wake up working towards, wake up, you know, putting it on our agenda, this is what we're doing with the cannabis industry today, this week, this month. We want an entity that's going to do that on a regular basis. And right now, there, to my knowledge, no entity in Michigan that's doing that on a, on a regular, daily basis.
Good to know. So in terms of 3.9, the college tuition reimbursement program, so would this chamber then continue these reimbursements after the three years where our $200,000 is available to them?
The answer is hopefully yes. In the process of matching our dollars, we would hope they would match our training dollars as well. I think a big benefit, as Commissioner Huffman is bringing up, would the business industry invest in this entity? The answer is yes, if the entity is assisting them to be productive with getting the right trained people, the right screen people, if this industry is really helping them with their HR process to hire the best people with the certifications and things like that, and there's incentives for those individuals to be as educated as possible going in the door, we think that would be a positive for that chamber to continue that, but hopefully add additional money to that process.
Fantastic. As you know, I'm very supportive of any educational component in, in all of this, and I know when we were putting the, the process together, when in 2020, and we said there has to be an educational process, and this is part of that. Would the chamber also help with the licensing, all of that? I know that we were, I, I know that we were thinking about hiring someone within the city to help be that, so this chamber is going to take the place of that?
Yeah, I think it, it won't help with the licensing, it'll help with hopefully the education of what it takes to get the license.
Right, no, we'll always, the license will always go through the clerk's office.
Yes, correct. You always have to go through our process, but hopefully the entity will be able to educate people what the process is, and why you go left, and why you go right, and why you need this documentation to clarify this information. So, you hit on it, Commissioner Hess, this is a educational chamber to educate the community and the business industry on how to work with the community to make the community better, and also hopefully open up opportunities for individuals in our inner-city core to have in this industry if they would like. Right now, there's no vehicle
Right.
For individuals to say, I would like to do this legally.
Thank you.
What's, what's my route? We're trying to create that route.
So when would this go live?
Um, once we make, I can see if I can get a partner to make the change to the young adults instead of you.
Young adults, that was one thing.
Instead of you. Hopefully it'll go out next week, a couple of weeks. It'll go out this, it'll go out this month, that's the mission.
Fantastic. Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess. Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Hess, you actually brought up a very good point when you talk about sustaining the tuition reimbursement for individuals that go through that training. And I know at one point at a commission meeting, we talked about creating a, a committee to talk about upping the amount that actually goes to them, which right now is the 25% of the tax revenue. I bring that up because I, you know, I would love to talk about that some more at our, at a regular scheduled meeting, maybe our next committee meeting or commission meeting would be good. I don't foresee that we need really a committee to talk about what we could allocate, because I did find the revenue numbers here that was sent to us, it was in a Friday email that Jim had sent out a couple of months ago. I really think we should take a look at that. I mean, if we're talking about sustaining, you know, you got the SPK and they're working and they're getting funding, but if you're talking about another part of that and really sustaining this chamber going forward, and making sure that individuals and the businesses can get reimbursed for doing that, I think that, that could be something that we should definitely talk about at our next commission meeting to see what we can do to up that, that amount for you guys. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Commissioner Prado?
Just thought of one more question, Director Mitchell. So on the job training reimbursement, I guess the question would be, say if, if one of the locations were to hire a manager, a location manager, in some managerial role, marketer for the cannabis business, would that be legitimate grounds for the training for working for the entity?
Yeah, so in the case of, the amount was after the Michigan Works Program that I worked with, is that, it's, it's for any position that the company hires for. And I remember in this case, it has to be either you're a city resident or SPK, 50% or 100%, right? And so they have to, one, prove the person lives in the city, two, prove the person was officially hired and used as a copy of the first check. And then we would, we would have a cap, we haven't decided what that would be, that cap yet, but we have a cap that they can max out at that much of what they grant, and there would be a grant, too. So it'll be grant dollars for that on-the-job training.
I think that's great, because I, I think it would behoove us not to just use it for just an entry-level position, you know?
Correct.
For, for people who have expertises in, in the industry, and especially for, again, for SPK neighborhoods, our city of Kalamazoo residents, I think that'd be great. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you, Commissioner Prado. Any other questions, then, Commissioners? Well, we're definitely going, this isn't the normal course of events where we go through a, a city RFP line by line, so I appreciate you being patient with all that. I will continue along the same vein here, just with a few particular questions. Right off the bat here, does it, have you, are you already aware that there are likely applicants for this? Because it is a bit of a special niche kind of work, and I wonder right off the top, are, are there...
We've, we've heard the answer is yes. There, there's some local entities that are interested in applying. I think as, when I did the presentation the first go-around three months ago, is that we don't know. One thing we know as staff and as a city is that this is a priority, this equity initiative is a priority for the city. So if, if no one applies for this, then we'll be back trying to revamp how we as a city should implement this, and, and city staff, CPED staff will come with a proposal on how to do that. So, like you said, this, this doesn't exist, but there's some expertise we know that, that are out there that would be interested in doing this, but we don't know if they're quote-unquote just talking. But we don't know if they're quote-unquote just talking. The rubber is about to meet the road, as they say, and if you can do this, you're, you're going to have to put the documentation showing. Not only you can do it, but how you're going to be successful at doing it. And so that's what we want to see. And if we don't have the enough applicants or the right applicants, we will, you know,
Go to Plan B then, right?
Yeah, we'll go through that process. We'll educate and update this commission on that, those steps.
Super. Thank you, Director Mitchell. Hey, I know that match is an expectation. I noticed that in five evaluation criteria, match is not one of the pointing items out of the ninety-five total. So did you, did you make a decision about that?
Yeah, it's, it's one of the things is that we want to see a match, but you, we can't, I don't want to say that you have to match our dollars and you only have the, you don't have the capacity to build up to that. We know it's a process. We, we know we have ideas, how we think you can do it. But you may have a better idea or a different idea. We just want to make sure that it is a process worked on. Now, like I said, this is a three-year process. If they show that they cannot do anything, then we, we can pull out and say, you're not in a position to sustain yourself beyond city government dollars. In this initiative, we need to go a different route. But we want to give them the opportunity to put together their own plan. We can make suggestions. But they have to put together their own plan on how they're going to initiate this. This, this is the vision, but we're not making it a requirement.
Got it. Okay. Because I see that in requirements six point two, it says recipient will be responsible to provide match funding. But of course, there's no reference to what that means. Sometimes someone sees match, you think, oh, that's one-to-one or something along those lines.
Correct.
But it's, it's not clearly identified there. But it does say recipient will be responsible for, to provide match funding to city provided funding. So you're saying that's some interpretation of how that's going to actually happen then?
Yeah, we want to give flexibility, because like you said, they may do one-to-one or they may go beyond it. They may go, they say below that. They may be only do fifty percent match. But they have to define to us, what, what does that match mean? Like Commissioner Decker, we're going to match it, but we're going to make sure all our dollars focuses on workforce development and training. That's our match. They have to define what that match is, and we have to accept, do we like how they're approaching with their match? Or do we want more from them on that initiative? That's the discussion we want to have with the entity. We don't not want to box anyone in and say you have to go this route. We want to make sure, we want to bring as much creativity from this entity beyond us that we may or may not know about, that they can bring to the table to expand and make this, this proposal more successful.
Great. I know that you've got a timeline on the last page here, which is highlighted, because I know that's, doesn't go into effect till you actually issue the RFP, which you had an initial August thirty-first date in there for that, so it'll be soon.
Yes.
Which, but I presume that as you adjust your timeline, then that'll change when the proposals are due a little bit. So that means at this point, I think that would be twenty-four, right? It says twenty-three, but it'd be January, sometime in January in twenty-four, maybe towards the end.
Correct.
All those dates, say twenty-three, be changed to twenty-four. So once that, talking about applications through this process, it will be sometime early next year, sometime maybe in the January, we'll actually see, have we received any applications? You know, does it look like there are folks that could potentially meet our expectations, that sort of thing?
Correct, correct. So like you said, we're, hopefully, we'll be approving something this year, but this will not be implemented until twenty twenty-four.
Well, thank you very much. Any other? Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, mayor. Just one quick thing, Director Mitchell, as I, I know from our previous meetings, you know, on the EDC, for number twelve, it says payment default. And again, I, I completely understand if you're behind on payment and taxes, licenses, or other monies due to the city of Kalamazoo. Just a thought, your team can think about it and talk it over. What about if they're in a probationary period?
Ooh. Oh.
I'll let you guys talk about that. It's just a thought.
That'd be a legal discussion with our legal office on that discussion. Usually, if you owe us money, you owe us money. Sorry to say.
Yeah, but some of our probationary periods that we put in place could be like they need a sprinkler suppression put in or they need to take care of a garbage or something like that. So it's not just always about the funds.
Right.
It's also about the safety, you know, of their building. So.
Correct.
Let you guys mull on that. That was just a thought that I had.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Anything else, Director Mitchell?
No, thank you to yourself, mayor, and sorry for using this example. Vice mayor, city manager, the management office for assistance in this process, and commissioners for taking this equity initiative on. Because I think it is vital for us as the city to utilize these dollars to reinvest into the community and really work on, as we're trying to do, the people that was most impacted by this industry before it became legal. And so our mission is hopefully to create a entity in the city that focuses on this initiative on a daily basis. Not just part of our department. If it goes that route, we'll make the adjustment and, and make it happen. But we would like to have hopefully an entity that literally works on equity for the city in this industry, in this community on a regular daily basis. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And thank you, PJ, for being here from CPED as well for backup, even though I didn't have to jump in. And just for clarification for the minutes here, this was example purposes only. I do not happen to have be in the cannabis business.
Yet.
Maybe next time, change the names or something.
Change the names would be, okay. Thank you.
Manager Isma?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Commissioner Decker brought up an idea to have a committee of the whole meeting about the, the actual funding allocation. I would recommend that we have that discussion at budget time in the context of the entire budget, because the funding for these, the marijuana revenue does come into the general fund. And so anything that's taken away from the general allocation may impact some other area. So if it's okay, we could have that discussion. You're more than welcome to talk more about the issue. But as far as, you know, making any budgetary decisions, holding off for the budget that we're going to resume or start in December, so. Okay. And to that point, we do have two committee of the whole meetings in October that are, we have nothing scheduled. So if you have any ideas on committee of the whole topics you'd like to see, ideally, we'd like some lead time if it involves, you know, some larger topic, but just keep that out there. The next committee of the whole meeting is on the extension of our emergency housing ordinance. So that should be interesting as we go into that action item at the regular meeting next time.
Okay, thank you. Manager Isma, Commissioner Pradel?
Just a suggestion for one of the committee of the whole meetings. I know we have a lot happening with parking and how it's impacting our budget now and administering parking services and whatnot. But also just downtown, there's been a lot that's happened in a short amount of time. And I think it'd be really helpful to get a really good snapshot of laying the land of like who owns what now, what budget implications we're going to be seeing related to that sort of.
That's a good idea. Commissioner Hess?
And additionally, going along with that, just an update about downtown, who does what? How, how downtown is progressing, and especially as we go into the streets program, how that's going to come out?
Thank you. Anything else, Manager Isma?
That's it, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, this is an opportunity for commissioner comments for the committee of the whole meeting. Just a reminder is that there's an additional opportunity for commissioner comments that occurs at our business meeting. It starts in about one hour. Is there, are there any commissioner comments for this meeting? All right, appreciate it. I just wanted to mention that Vice Mayor Cooney, who was here for the beginning of the meeting and had to jump out. We don't normally have our meetings on Tuesday night, because Labor Day we do, and he happens to teach a class on Tuesday night. So he jumped back and forth so that his, he could teach his class and then still hopefully come back in then for our business meeting. We are adjourned.